I have six o'clock. So I'll call the meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, May 19th pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, Chapter 30A, subsection 18. And the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Carver Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that individuals who would like to view or listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by watching us live by tuning into Comcast Channel 15, our Area 58 government access channel. If despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real-time access due to technical difficulties, a recording or other comprehensive record of proceedings of this meeting will be made available online as soon as possible. And with that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Do we need to read the reason?
I think so.
I think so, yeah.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session citing general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3 to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the matter of DEP release tracking number 4-0000268. If discussion in open session would have a detrimental impact on the town's litigation position, and the chair so declares, and to reconvene in open session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Bob Bellman?
Bob Bellman says aye.
Mark Clark?
Mark Clark says aye.
Sarah Hewens?
Sarah Hewens says aye.
And Mark Townsend says aye. Okay, everybody, I'll see you over in the other executive session Zoom meeting. All right, all right, so it's seven o'clock, actually it's 7:01. I'll call the meeting of the Carver Select Board back to order. And Area 58, if you could bring up our flag, we'll stand and say Pledge of Allegiance.
We have to stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Bellman, if you could read our community prayer?
Okay. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all of whom provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve. And we discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. Keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Bellman. The first item on our agenda tonight is citizens' participation. Area 58, do we have any citizens that wish to participate tonight?
I'm unsure. If there's anyone out there that's connected.
Is there anyone connected to the meeting that wishes to speak?
Hi, I'm Fred Dahl.
Fred, you're on the agenda.
You're on.
Unless you want to speak about something other than the Eagle Project.
No, I don't have anything else.
All right, well, hearing none, I'll assume we have no citizens that wish to address the board this evening. So with that, Mr. Dahl, we'd love to hear about your Eagle Project.
So hello, I'm Fred Dahl. And last September, I came forth to you about my Eagle Project for Save Riav. I was going to do both gardens on the entrances and redo the signs. But I had to put it off for my football and Boy Scouts in the beginning because I had to get all my schoolwork done and all that. And spring is the best time to do a garden-like Eagle Project. But we got this pandemic going around that I couldn't really do it in the beginning. For safety reasons and all that, so I tried to sit it out for a little bit, but that didn't really work out. So I just got in contact with the health agency and they said it is approved, but I just don't have a written thing yet for that. But I am able to, I just need to know the state, know all the towns benefit from it, or if I'm allowed to do it still. And when I could start.
Well, so did the Board of Health give you our permission, provided you social distance and?
My father said that we got in contact and we do, we just don't have any written thing down for it yet.
Okay.
But we should be getting that soon.
Questions from the board? Sarah?
Yes, I just, Fred wanted you to be aware that you said you'd gone to the Historic Commission. I just wanted you to be aware that that land out there is under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
I'm sure they would be delighted, but you probably want to run it by them too.
Okay, thank you.
Sure thing.
Absolutely. Any other?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Bob.
No, Fred, thanks very much for taking your Eagle Scout project there. Just want to make sure, I read all the documents from Boy Scouts, all right, and social distancing and all supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? That being said, Fred, it sounds like a great project to me. I know we talked about it a little before when you came before the board, so. Let us know if we can be of help in any way.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Okay, next is a joint meeting with the planning board. Do we have a quorum of the planning board on the call?
Hi, this is Bruce Mackey, I'm chairman of the planning board. And let me, I'll start the planning board meeting of May 19th, 2020, and it's a joint meeting with the select board. This is for the appointment of Planning Board alternate Ellen Gordillo. And yeah, let me see who's out there tonight. Is Kevin Robinson with us? Don't see Kevin. Wilson Clea? No, Jen Bogart is here. And James Hoffman.
He's there.
James is here. And Bruce Mackey, that's me, I'm here. So we have three members, so I guess we can proceed.
Great. What is your, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, what's your quorum for a meeting?
I think we have, we have to have three members.
So it's a seven, is it a six-member board or a seven?
It's a five-member board.
Five-member board.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
So. Yeah, so I'll just talk about, we had a, Ellen has been before us before. I think all of you of the select board have met her before. We had two alternate people apply for the position last time and we didn't pick Ellen at the time. So, and so we had a scheduling conflict with the person that we had. She found out that she had other things to do on Tuesday nights, so she resigned. So we decided to call Ellen back and see if she's still interested. And she said that she was, so. So we were happy about that, so that's why we're here tonight. Is Ellen here? I don't see her face on the screen.
You're muted, Ellen.
I think it's difficult to see everybody because the number of people that are on the Zoom meetings, so there's actually, I know on my particular screen, I have two different screens. I have to go back and forth to see everybody, but Ellen is here, but Ellen is muted.
Ellen, you're muted.
Am I still muted?
No, you're fine now.
Oh, good, thank you.
Ellen, I guess if you'd like to speak to the boards.
Sure. Well, I'm thrilled to be here and I'm thrilled that you called me back and gave me the opportunity to serve on this board. I've been around for a while, as you know, I've been on Recreation Committee and Housing Committee. And I am really interested in everything that goes on in Carver. I think that the more participation that we have with people in the community and finding out what their needs are, the more interesting it gets for all of us. So I just would love to be part of this board and be able to voice some opinions of my own and look forward to serving with you all. I pretty much know all of you and I enjoy each and every one of you and respect your opinions on things. So I'm hoping that you will choose me this time on the board. Any questions? I don't know.
Questions from the board?
I actually have one. In the packet that we received, it says that the planning board since February has been soliciting applications. I just want to know what there was a process for that, how did that go on? And because this is the first I'm hearing about it. So when I try to keep myself up on things, just want to know, what have you done to solicit applicants?
That's not to me then, okay? Or is that to me?
Yeah, I don't know, Jim might want to address that. I know that I myself have spoken at the planning board meetings that we've, you know, needed an alternate member. And also spoke about, we may even need board members after the election, but we'll have to wait and see about that. Has anything, has this been posted, Jim?
Yes, we posted on the town website and really had no response from anyone else other than Ellen. And actually, Jim knows Ellen from the Recreation Board, so he reached out to her again and asked her to, if she's still interested in participating in the planning board.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just wanted people to know that Will is here, and Will, you're muted.
Thanks, Sarah.
Welcome, well. All right. Hearing nothing else from the board, Bruce, are any of your members have anything for Ellen?
Yeah, how about, does anybody, I know that we've gone through questions before the last time. I think the big question that I didn't ask last time was, are you going to be available on Tuesday nights?
I will DM Will, be sure to be available on Tuesday nights.
So we meet, we meet the second and the fourth Tuesday of the month, so.
I'm yours, for better or for worse, no, better, I hope.
Sometimes that's difficult for the members to meet because of job schedules and whatnot, but that's great.
Yeah, looking forward to it.
Mr. Chairman, through you.
Sure, go ahead, Will.
Thank you, everybody, and I apologize for being late. Ellen, I want to thank you very much for still being there for us and volunteering to come on this board. It's a long-term commitment, you'll get a lot of good reward from it, it's a lot of hard work. I look forward to seeing you on the board, so I'm very happy to see you here.
And if I might say that I'm looking forward to learning. It's important to me to learn the right way to move along in this committee. And I would appreciate all your help and your criticism, whatever you need to speak to me about. I really would like to learn as much as I can possibly so that I am an effective player on this committee.
Well, Ellen, you have a great board that you're coming into, a lot of dedicated people on this board. It's one of the best boards that I've been on. Everybody that's been involved here has a certain great feature and character that they bring to the board that were very well-funded. So I think you'll fit right in just nicely.
Thank you.
So anytime you need anything, I'm always just a phone call away.
Thank you, Will, I appreciate that.
Ellen, I'd just like to stop, just also thank you for stepping up and volunteering for the town, we really appreciate it.
Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Is there a motion from the board to select them?
I move we appoint Ellen Sordillo as the alternate.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous from the board of select them?
Thank you, folks.
All right, we can do that with the planning board also, but.
Make a motion to appoint Ellen Sordillo to the planning board as our alternate member.
Do you have a second?
I'll second, Ellen Sordillo.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion and a second? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So that was unanimous also.
Thank you, better this time around, yes, thank you.
Welcome to the board.
Congratulations, Ellen.
Thank you very much.
We'll look forward to seeing you next Tuesday night, we're going to have.
Looking forward to it.
And if you have any questions before the meeting, please give me or Jim Walsh a call or contact.
I'm not shy, I will definitely do that, thank you.
Okay, great, well, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Bob?
Bruce and the planning board, we're going to be taking a look at the rest of the town meeting warrant tonight. And we're concerned that if we hold a town meeting in late June, it's going to be socially distanced with masks. And our guess would be it's not going to be particularly well-attended, a lot of people might still be skittish about going. We're undoubtedly going to have to have another town meeting in the fall to deal with finances once we have a clearer picture. So my question is, are there any planning board articles, we haven't taken any action on them yet, we're rarely not at the speed on them. Is there, do you feel strongly that you want those planning board articles to be dealt with at a June town meeting? Or could they wait until a fall town meeting where perhaps we'd have more people and a better ability to get into the issues?
I don't think that we have anything that's really burning that couldn't wait. But I might want to ask Jim Walsh how he feels about this, but I think that we could put this off to the next town meeting in the fall. Jim, do you have any?
Nope, I would defer to you, to the board.
I agree with you, I agree with that whole thought. I think the thought process, we're moving way too quick, I think, to get a better feel for what the community really wants. And we're talking about bylaw changes. I agree with Mr. Clark, think that, and also with Bruce, this can wait till the fall town meeting when we have. And if things still ain't the same at that point, we have nothing on these articles that we've talked about that can't wait till next spring.
I agree, I think that's an excellent thought as well, and I, as I would be in favor of proposing them as well. So when we get, when we get that far, we could talk about it, but no, no reservations on the board if we were to.
No.
No, no, there isn't, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Ellen, welcome to the board, by the way.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, next, I'm going to recuse myself for the next item because it involves my wife, so Sarah, I'll let you handle this if you don't mind.
Thank you.
If we're done with Ellen, I could adjourn the planning board meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn.
You're welcome to stay.
Stay.
You'll always say that when I come before the board.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a second. So, okay, Jim seconded, so we have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye, thank you to the board, thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
Bye, guys.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye, Sarah.
Bye, CP. So at this time, since Mark is recusing himself, I will accept a motion to appoint to the Board of Registars the following people. Cara Dayhill, Paul Frangello, Maureen Townsend, and Jen Toomey.
I'll second.
Well, no, I can't make the motion, you can make the motion, someone else has to.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Anyone else? No, Mark is out, who else do we have here? That's it. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ron?
I did aye.
Okay, very good. Motion passes 3-0-0 because Mark has recused himself.
Great, all right. Thanks, Sarah.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda, moving right along, is the nomination of a representative of the Old Colony Elder Services Board. And Carol Julius is the recommended nomination, is there a nomination of Carol Julius to the Old Colony Elder Services Board?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Moving right along, polling hours for town election. So we have voted a date for town election, but we never voted on the polling hours. So we need to discuss the polling hours. I know nine to three was a discussion that came up in the past. Mr. Clark?
Yes, when Cara was with us last time, she seemed very comfortable with the nine to three. So I'd make a motion that the polling hours be adopted on Election Day from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous once again, all right? Okay, a discussion and vote on the date of annual town meeting. Mr. LaFond, would you like to update us, any discussions with Mr. Carbo?
Sure, as you can see from my attached memo, Mr. Carbo is indeed available on the 29th. There were some other dates that had been proposed. We had also thought that the 29th might be, as much as it's late, being a late date provides us with the advantages of hopefully having some understanding of what local aid might look like. Although I'm not very optimistic at this point, in light of the fact that it's been eerily silent, both from our, you know, MMA legislators. And it also gives us a chance to see what other communities are doing. There's a lot of discussion and some planning for, you know, out of town or outside or other forms of, whether it's satellite, but just other ways of holding a town meeting under these unconventional times. So to the extent that we might have the opportunity to learn from some of those, the good, the bad, and the ugly, I think is, also helps us if we have a later town meeting. So without, you know, I could go on and on, but I know you all have your own ideas, but in, you know, the crux of it is town council's available on 29th. It gives us a little more time to review the warrant and helps, I think, all of you make any further recommendations you may find necessary.
Discussion?
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Bob.
Yeah, just a question for Sarah, when we got together last time, you had mentioned that you'd asked Dave Seidenhoff to sort of do a social distancing survey of the auditorium at the school?
Yes, I just now pulled that up.
And was it 106 people that he said could comfortably fit in there?
No, it was a little bit more. He, basically what he did is he went down there and he measured all the armrests, the chairs, the rows. And so with, these are numbers, he said, using the six-foot distancing rule, which means you can seat approximately 129 people. And there's also a little room for standing participants. And then right around that same time, I gave Rich Goulart a call at Area 58 and asked him, just in terms of broadcasting this, what would be easiest for him and his crew to have lots of little satellite rooms at the high school? Or to have one, just one other satellite place, like at the elementary school? And he said, as far as he's concerned, it's the latter, having it one other place.
When you mentioned the other place, you're thinking that would be people wanting, also physically attending town meeting, they're just not in the same room?
Correct, in other words, if we have more than 129 people, they're going to have to go somewhere. And I was actually, subsequently, I was talking to Cara, who said she had been speaking with Bob Bentley, who mentioned that if you do have it in a secondary place, you have to have us, I don't know what the exact term was used, but something like an assistant town moderator over in that secondary place, as well as a teller. But, you know, are we going to have 129 people? I don't know, sometimes we have, you know, 300 people. And this is all predicated on assuming that we can actually have that many people meet in one room, but.
That's right, remember, we also have to have a dedicated area for non-residents where they can be if they choose to come to the meeting as well.
There's never a whole ton of those, I mean, they could maybe use one of the smaller rooms.
What about the folks up front? We normally have people shoved together up front, you know, the FinCom and Select Board, School Committee.
I did speak to Kevin about that, and they'll obviously have to be socially distanced as well, you know, as long as those regulations are still in place.
Yeah, and so this calculations, I think, Mark, I copied you on this, and I copied you, Rick.
Yes.
So this, he does say that his calculations there are based on the six-foot distancing rule. So that would include all the boards that sit up front, I imagine.
All right, I just wanted to get a sense of what we're looking at, and again, if the governor hasn't lifted the, you know, depends on how many people.
I'm having trouble hearing you, Ron, sorry.
I'm saying that a lot of it will depend on what the maximum number of people are allowed to be gathering at that point. So this, all we can do, I think, at this point, it's, at this point, since the best we can do is to pick June 29th and see what develops between now and then. And start trying to do the planning and see what can be effectively set up. I think the reason I mentioned about the planning is to try to keep this town meeting as simple as possible. And hope that in the fall, we can get together and take up any issues, you know, that need to be tackled in the fall and make any adjustments in the budget in the fall that need to be made.
Well, that's why I started asking Dave quite a while back, because regardless of when we have it, it's good to plan for it and see how many people could fit there, what works best for the, you know, video camera people and, because it's a lot of moving parts.
Right, and there may be a lot of people still skittish about going, even if we can accommodate them, so.
I think that's one of the reasons that June 29th is such a, well, not a perfect date, a better day. It gives us more time to plan, it gives us more time to see what other towns are doing and try to learn from some of the things they're doing. Who knows, some of the social distancing rules may be relaxed by then, I don't, we don't know, but it gives us as much time as possible while staying in that June timeframe, so.
And it gives the town clerk, gives the town clerk a maximum distance between the election and town meeting as well. So I'll make a motion that we set town meeting for June 29th at, what time do you want to say? Seven o'clock?
It's just normally seven o'clock, correct?
Yeah.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Sarah, you're in favor, right?
Yes, I'm sorry, I.
Okay, unanimous. All right. Discussion and possible vote on the annual town meeting warrant articles.
Mr. Chairman, I know that you received on behalf of the board an email from the chairman of the Finance Committee last evening. And they made a request to discuss with the board articles 3, 5, and 18 prior to the board taking final action on the warrant. I know you have that. There are a number of other articles, as was pointed out earlier, zoning articles, which, as you discussed, maybe could wait. The articles that the Finance Committee specifically had the concern with 3, 5, and 18, and 18 is, I'll mention that one first. That is the changes to the Town Own Property Committee, the TOPS Committee bylaw. And the concern was that prior to, that there had been a discussion, but there had not been a vote yet. And their concern or request is that a member of the Finance Committee be added to the list of. And their concern or request is that a member of the Finance Committee be added to the list of participants or appointees to that committee. Currently, as you know, there's a number of, of local, of representative boards and committees, but the Finance Committee isn't one of them.
Okay.
So, so if the board weren't inclined to agree with that, that's obviously an easy word processing amendment to the current warrant as it's listed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Dalton.
So, I'm all in favor of this, because I brought it forward too, but it appears that there's been some, it pretty much makes that committee have no authority at all, period. The way it was rewritten was that it, it basically said that no matter what this committee does, or says, that the town administrator can overrule it the way I read it. So I think it might have to be looked over again.
Okay.
So I'm not, I'm not prepared to vote on that one yet, to, to really understand the role of that committee. I mean, I know in concept what the role should be. But with some of the changes that were made to it, and I don't know who made those changes, but. Yeah.
Well, well, I guess one of the first things perhaps we should discuss before we get into the individual articles, is do we want to set up? I think you all get the meeting for the, the letter from the Finance Committee. Do we want to set up a joint meeting with the Finance Committee? Do you feel that's necessary? Is that something we want to do, or do we just want to vote, vote on them ourselves?
I want to hear what they have to say, to be honest, Mr. Chairman.
Can we invite them to our June 2nd meeting that we have scheduled?
Rick, is that, are there any issues with the June 2nd meeting timewise?
No, none whatsoever, especially with the late town meeting now. Again, keep, keep in mind the issues that the Finance Committee had on Articles 3 and 5 are interrelated. It really, they have to do with the, how the $99,000 is formatted, which ultimately was to supplement the town administrator line item, salary line item, whether that should be a, within the budget as a transfer within, within the budget, or if it should be done as listed under the free appropriations from free cash in the different articles. So that's the formatting question that the Finance Committee has a, would like to discuss. And their, their recommendation was that it, that it would not be in the budget, but it would be in Article 5 rather than in Article 3, so. I'm not sure if that's an issue for the board. I'm not sure what the origins of that are. I don't know if the Board of Select would have any strong feelings. If the answer is no, then I would suggest that, that there really isn't much of, with any issue between the Board of Select and the Finance Committee. So if you have any direction or advice, I'd be happy to interact with the Finance Committee on that, and perhaps this issue or concern can be dealt with even without, with, even without a meeting. But again, I'm happy to talk to the Chairman of the Finance Committee about that if you.
Could I, could I ask?
Pursuits?
Yeah, Rick, I just wanted to ask you which, which way that money should be allocated makes most sense to you?
Well, to me, I think, and again, it's a little bit tough, because obviously it impacts how I get paid.
No, I don't mean, I don't mean which makes sense to you in terms of the fact that you get paid from it. I mean, as, as a town administrator, I figure out where the money's coming from.
I'm only saying that, Sarah, to the, to the extent that I don't need a disclosure, but to the extent that I put that out there in fairness, to me, it actually makes sense to have it as part of the budget, because it is a budget item. And it's not a separate, it's not a separate, an item apart from the budget document itself.
That was my feeling.
However, once again, it does come down to a matter of, you know, how, how much dissension do we need over a formatting issue? That's, that's the way I see it, even though I do agree that the way it's structured now, to me, makes more sense. Once again, I think it is a matter of, is it really worth a disagreement that could end up on town meeting floor when essentially it's achieving the same thing for FY 2021?
Well, if it's a recurring expense, it should be part of the budget.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Clark?
Just a little historical perspective. We got into this whole discussion after we came up with the initial settlement with Mr. Melonowski. And as the, and at the time, we were fully anticipating having a town meeting on April 14th. And we knew that Mr. Melonowski wasn't leaving until the 17th. We didn't know if we'd have a new town administrator hired by that time. So that Millen, Mr. Melonowski came up with putting that $99,000 in the free cash article for the money to be transferred in to take care of the hiring of a town administrator. Well, obviously, town meeting got postponed. We hired a town administrator, so to me, it only makes sense that you then fund the town administrator in the operating budget. And, you know, I mean, if, as relative to a formatting issue, you know, I'd rather see that, if, if we're going to do it as a formatting issue, the $99,000 goes to fulfill our obligation to Mr. Melonowski and his, you know, $200,000 that he, he's owed next year. I mean, the, why would, we, we have hired a town administrator, we're going into a new budget here, why wouldn't the town administrator's salary be in the regular operating budget line item? So, again, I, you know, I mean, we may be, maybe going through semantics, it might just be a formatting issue, but I think just from a logical standpoint, I think the reason it showed up the way it did before was because we thought we were going to have an April 12th town meeting and would not have hired a new administrator by then. And because of the pandemic, everything got thrown off. So I see no reason not to get together and still have the conversation with them, you know, out of respect, and, and discuss it. And certainly be open to, you know, any thoughts they have, but just, I think in terms of what happened, I think it just seems to make sense to do it the way it's being done now. Sorry.
Um, so Mr. Mil, Mr. LaFond, could you invite the Finance Committee to sit in with us on our, our June 2nd meeting?
Yes, I certainly will, Mr. Chairman.
Alright. And are there any other agenda articles, other, any other warrant articles we need to discuss, Mr. LaFond? I know we have planning articles.
The articles that I have, as, you know, Mark and Elaine had marked them, highlighted them. The Community Preservation Committee, their recommended action for this year, Article 7. The board has not made a recommendation yet on that. And Article 9, rescinding two outstanding, two borrowings that have that are no, no longer necessary, the balance of two borrowings. To some extent, that's more of a ministerial act, but it, it's helpful to have that done, get those off the books. Do you want to take this one at a time, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I was gonna say, why don't we take them, why don't we take them in order? Why don't we talk about Article 7, the Community Preservation Committee report? Discussion from the board there?
What do they have for projects?
Sorry, let me, let me, let me find that, Mr. Belbin. I, I have all my zoning in front of me. Okay. The only project they have at the moment is from estimated revenue, $329,000 to fund the municipal playground, open space. And again, that's on Article, page nine of your warrant. The other, the other two amounts, actually, three amounts are actually, one for the administrative expenses, and the other two are for the funding the, the necessary reserves under the law, both for community housing and historic preservation. So there's only one project that's on here for this year.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We approve this one.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
I have, I have a question. Why is that not listed under recreation rather than open space?
I don't know, Sarah. I could find that out for you.
I mean, it's, you know, there's a category for such things.
I'll have to ask the Chairman that question.
And I, and I guess I have a, maybe I'm forgetting, but it seems to me, I recall last year, we set aside quite, quite a bit of money for the, I'm, I'm just curious why, why we're adding this on this year.
I believe this was part of the original plan that was proposed to us last year.
It's a very expensive playground.
Well, going forward, we have motion and a second. Do we want to vote on it, Sarah? Would you prefer that we wait until you get your action, your, your answer to your question?
If you don't mind, yeah, I hate to put it off, but I appreciate it.
Mr. Clark, draw a motion. What are your, what are your thoughts here?
I mean, normally I defer to the.
Sorry, I lost your, I lost your sound for a minute there.
I, normally I defer to the committee, and to assume they know what they're doing, but I guess there's no harm in waiting, since we're taking, we're going to have to take up other articles on June 2nd as well.
That was, that was my thought.
Withdraw my motion.
And I would say this is more of a clarification for the board, as opposed to any type of opposition, so we'll look into that, Sarah.
Thank you.
Richard, Rick?
Yes.
Can I, um, can you just have the totals of what's in each account? Because that's usually a question I ask at town meeting, and just so people know, how much is in each one of those three accounts?
Yes, I will get that to the board, Mr. Belbin, in the next day or so.
That's fine. No hurry.
Alright. Thank you. The next one, Rick, is Article 9, correct?
That is correct.
Alrighty. Article to see if the town will vote to rescind the following amounts that have been authorized to be barred, but which are no longer needed for the purpose for which they were approved. So it's just the two.
I'll make a motion. We approve, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, so a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. What is the, the next one?
The next one I have is number 14, which refers to the Town Administrator Screening Committee, and that would be a request for a special act.
Alright, just scroll down and get there here.
Bob, was that part of what wasn't supposed to be in there, or was that always in there?
No, I, this is, this is somebody else put this in, I think.
And honestly, this is, you know, kind of predates my tenure, but there may have been some confusion on that, and I certainly wouldn't want to, uh, I don't know if Elaine has any input on that, even though we can't steer tonight.
Sorry. Okay, the, the screening committee?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
I thought, one of you guys threw that in there.
I thought it was Alan Dunham. Memory serves me correctly, I thought Alan brought that forward.
Oh, I think you're right. I think, I, I think you're right, yeah.
No, I, I don't remember that.
But I, I guess my thought there, because I thought, and I thought we had this discussion, is that Bob had several ideas for looking over the overall town administrative bylaws. And I, I, I thought we had sort of felt comfortable that incorporating this into that whole study, and then presenting it at next year's town meeting was an appropriate way to do it, as opposed to doing it as a one-off.
That was my thought as well. I thought we'd try to spend some time discussing it and try to merge all the ideas together and come up with one.
That's how I remembered it too, actually.
So if there's no objection, I'd make a motion that we withdraw that article from the warrant.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. So Article 14 is withdrawn. Where are we going now, Rick?
The ne, the next one is Article 18, which you discussed briefly before, the Town Own Property Committee. Bob had raised some concerns, and, and I already forget whether or not the board decided to take that off the warrant, but refresh my memory if that's the case, please.
Well, I think the issue, the issue was that in Bob's mind, it had been rewritten, so it basically stripped the board of having the authority to make any decisions, because the town administrator could basically overrule any decision they made. Is that correct, Bob? Your, in your reading of it?
Yeah, because the last one, it says, "The committee shall serve in advisory capacity only, and nothing in the bylaw shall be deemed to prevent any board officer or committee of the town from using, conveying, disposing, and/or acquiring interest in land or buildings as may be authorized by law or town meeting vote, or as requiring any vote or recommendation of a committee prior to existent, exercising the town's authority to use, convey, dispose, or acquire interest in any land." So basically, that last paragraph there turns around and says, well, yeah, you can have a committee here, you guys can look at all these properties, but it doesn't matter what you feel about those, we can do whatever we want with them.
Yeah, I, I agree with Bob. That's exactly what it says.
I, I agree 100% as well, so.
Did this come through you, or?
I, I, I had put, I had put an article together, but it got modified.
Yeah, it didn't have this in it.
It did not have, I didn't put this in.
I remember we withdrawed the article.
Yeah, I, let's, yeah, let's withdraw it, get it rewritten, and so that we can, people can clearly. Was that a motion, Sarah?
It was.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Then the next one I have, Mr. Chairman, is.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman? Yes, when, when we do redraw that, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with not, with, with including a FinCom member to be part of that committee.
Yeah, I don't either. I don't have a problem either.
Okay. Okay. So, I'm sorry, Mr. LaFond, where did you say we were going now?
Nope, no, just not to beat that up, but adding a Finance Committee member would make that an even-numbered committee. Personally, I don't think that's a problem, because if you get into a, a tie vote that needs somebody to break that tie, I think the issue is already probably, shouldn't be approved anyway at that point. So just based upon the current makeup of the committee and the bylaw, adding a Finance Committee member would make it an even number, just, just so you're aware, unless you wanted to add more at-large people to be taken up another day, but just, just something for your consideration at a later date. And now, again, moving on to number 19, is the Wetland Protection Bylaw.
And just, 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 if I could just hop on top, just hop in your discussion on Article 18 for a minute, not to, but when you talk about adding additional people on, I think it's always a good idea to have a member or two from the general public. I think, I, all these committees, we should always include a spot or, or, or two, or a, a member of the general public. I think they bring a lot of knowledge into these committees, and I, I just would like to see a spot available.
So Rick's suggesting that we, we make it three people from the general public instead of just two.
Well, I'm, I'm fine with any number from the general public. I just, I just would like to see people from the general public included in those committees.
So why don't we add one more, so it's an, it's an odd-numbered committee?
Well, I think for now, we, we made a motion to ta, to take it off.
Right.
I think that already passed, but when, when we come back to it, I just wanted to.
When we come back, yeah.
Just bring that, that's all. Alright, so I'm sorry, so Article 19.
Yes, which is the, the Wetland Protection Bylaw, update to the Wetland Protection Bylaw.
Thoughts on this, folks?
Coming through Conservation. Who's this sponsor?
I'm sorry, that is, yeah, one moment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, it is from the Conservation Commission.
I just want to make sure that it has the agricultural exemptions in it, because that, that would be 310 CMR, 10.04. Excuse me. Because last year, the problem was they did not, they did not, they, they assumed no matter what you were doing, if you were a farmer, you had to, everything you did, you had to come and ask the Conservation Committee, and that's just not the way the regulations, the state regulations are written. There's a lot of things the agricultural exemptions permit. There's a lot of things the agricultural exemptions permit that don't need a permit from the commission. So I'm not sure that I see that in here.
Yeah, I don't see it.
You don't see it either, Elaine?
No, I see the 801 CMR, but I don't see the 310.
Yeah.
And that's really dangerous, because it's just gonna fail again at town meeting. I mean, the growers all stood up, and they, I don't know if you remember, but several growers stood up and said, "You're saying to me that if I'm cleaning my ditches, I have to come and get a permit from you?" And I believe it was Mr. Moore responded, "Yes, that's what I'm saying." And that's not, they can't actually do that, because the law gives these agricultural exemptions.
And this type of article tends to have a lot of back and forth and create a lot of discussion at town meeting, and I just wonder if this is something we might want to consider putting off until the fall.
I was just gonna suggest that that's sort of my thought, is that we need to try to keep this June town meeting as simple as possible.
Yeah.
Deal with the things that really need to be dealt with, and this gives the Conservation Commission the summer to perhaps rework that submission in the fall.
Right.
So I'd make a motion to withdraw this article or table it for the fall town meeting.
Second.
Discussion?
Just one, I mean, I'd like to have someone from Conservation to come in and actually discuss these with us at some point, so people really know what this means, what these changes are here for prior to town meetings, so there's a good understanding.
I agree with, I would agree with that.
Right.
If we put it off, perhaps before we consider it for the fall warrant, we could have somebody from Conservation Committee and talk to us about it.
Has there been a public hearing on this at all? Does anyone know?
That's a good question, because they're supposed to have a public hearing.
That's right.
I would change my understanding too, right? Even if it wasn't legally required, it's obviously a good idea.
That's right. I noticed on this that there has been no vote from the Conservation Commission, so I wonder if that's why, because I wonder if they haven't held a public hearing yet.
Yeah, I think they're required to hold a public hearing. If you're gonna change your bylaw, I mean, that's the way it is in Planning Board as well.
Yeah. Well, okay, so do we have a motion to table this?
Yep.
Yep, second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous.
And then, Mr. Chairman, we get into Articles 20 through 26, which are zoning articles.
They're the ones from the Planning Board?
Yep.
Correct.
All of them are from the Planning Board?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion that they all be tabled to the fall town meeting?
Yep, second.
Any other discussion?
Ron, when you say "tabled," does that mean you'd like them to be removed from the warrant?
Removed from the warrant and added to the form of a meeting warrant.
Okay.
Same as with the Wetlands Protection One, Rick.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'm sorry, we have a motion and a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous.
So I think the only articles that are outstanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Elaine or anyone else, are Articles 3 and 5, that, and you'd like the Finance Committee invite them to your meeting the first Tuesday in June to discuss these.
Absolutely. June 2nd.
Very good.
And I just want to comment on Article 7, just so there's no speculation. I have a feeling that where it says municipal playground, that was probably from last year, and that should be taken out, and it should just say estimated revenues for open space.
I think you are correct, because municipal playground is already been--
It's almost complete, yeah.
So, but we'll clarify that, but that's a good, good, good point, Elaine.
I will clarify that, because my understanding was I thought there was gonna be a secondary infusion after they added the rubber services, but maybe I'm wrong, maybe they covered that elsewhere. Anyway, we'll get--
We'll find out for our next meeting.
Right.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to ask, Mr. LaFawn, are we considering having an article on town meeting, asking the town meeting members to vote to transfer that money from the Conservation Trust Fund, the way they, because to change, to change the funding mechanism and the purpose for which the money is used, seems to me we would need a town meeting vote, since that's the way it was voted in.
I thought we were advised that that wasn't necessary, because we get, we appeal to the state to get that approval.
And that was sent, that letter was sent to the state.
Are you referring to, I'm sorry, a particular article here, Sarah?
No, I'm saying, in my opinion, there should be an article there. I think we did an in-run-around-town meeting by not having an article on the warrant for that.
I think, I think it's a little harsh to say it was an in-run-around-town meeting.
Oh, no, I think it actually was. I think it was, I think it was--
Essentially, Rick, there was eight hundred, there was over eight, there was a lot of money in the--
Six hundred thousand.
And the suggestion was to move that money into the stabilization fund to give us more resources to deal with the pandemic. And the board voted to go through an act of the legislature in order to have that approved, which is the format that is being used now, and Sarah's suggesting that we take it to town meeting instead.
Because it was set up at town meeting, the funding mechanism and the purpose for which the money is used was voted in by town meeting. I think if it's gonna be changed, it should be voted by, at town meeting as well.
I thought we discussed that, and that was the purpose for the legislative action, was to make, to get that to happen now.
Correct.
My recollection.
Well, then I--
I mean, obviously, a legislative act clearly would trump any local action. I obviously don't know the history, certainly to the extent, so the request to do so was, who, just for my own benefit--
The Conservation Commission transferred the money to the town for the purposes of going to the stabilization fund.
No, they voted to do it, Ron. They didn't transfer it.
Well, they voted to make the monies available to the towns, to be, to be available to the towns to utilize during this crisis. And for the sake of immediacy, since we didn't know when town meeting was gonna be held, because we still don't know that it's gonna happen in June, that the monies would be, the, an act of the legislature would make the monies available to the stabilization fund immediately, as opposed to having to wait for when we could assemble for town meeting.
And see, I obviously misunderstood that, because I was assuming the legislature, our legislative body here in Carver.
I think that it's pretty clear that we were talking about--
It wasn't me.
Yeah, that was my understanding too. My understanding was that we weren't gonna go to town meeting, that that was, that was why we were looking, we were looking to make it happen as quickly as possible, and that's why we went through the special legislative act.
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Bellman.
What harm is it if we put an article on town meeting for this?
Well, let's say the legislature approves it and town meeting doesn't. Then what happens? I think, I guess the state legislature trumps town meeting, so the town meeting could only, even if they voted no, unless we withdraw our appeal to the legislature, going through town meeting has no meaning.
Can I, just for my own benefit, the, there has been an appeal for a request of special legislation to allow this. Does the legislative, the request for legislative act require it? Or does it just give the town the ability to do something that otherwise would not have the ability to do without a town meeting? When a town meeting did not look imminent. And again, I'm gonna have to read it myself, but--
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's a legal question. I don't know, but it seemed, I mean, my take on it is if some, if a funding mechanism and the purpose for the money is voted on a town meeting, and it's one single thing, the only way to undo that is to go back to town meeting, unless you go to the governor, or whoever.
And right now--
And I thought that's why we went to the governor.
Well, I totally did not get that. So I agree with Bob. What harm does it do to have it on as a warrant?
Unless we, unless we repeal our application to the governor, then whatever town meeting decided would not make a difference, because the governor's decision--
But it's the right thing to do. Let's ask town meeting.
But what if they say no? Well, then you're saying withdraw the appeal to the governor?
No.
And then the money might not be available to the fall.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I can't--
The money wouldn't, if, if, if we would withdraw our appeal to the governor to get his approval to do this, and we don't end up holding a town meeting to the fall, and those monies are needed, we would not have access to them.
We could appeal to the governor.
And how long's that gonna take?
I don't know.
All right, well, anyway, I'm satisfied with the appeal to the governor if we--
My feeling with this whole thing is that bring it back to town meeting, give them an opportunity to speak out, talk about it, and see what they want to do with it. I think that, I don't think the money's going to be needed right now. We don't know when, or if the governor's gonna sign it, who knows? But no matter what, town meeting, we have a date for it. We can have a discussion, all right? We can have a vote. All right, and they, town meeting may say, "No, they don't want to do, you'd spend that money." But we also have them saying, them, meaning Conservation, that they're going to discuss having caps on how much that account can actually grow to. So there may be a future opportunity to get that money, maybe not this tax, this town meeting, but maybe next town meeting. Who knows? But that's my feeling.
Yeah, and that's actually not precisely, my understanding from talking to a couple of the Conservation Commission members, that's not exactly what they're planning on discussing. I'm not sure where they're going with that, but that's not necessarily what they're, that's what we were told.
Well, Rick, perhaps you could find out what the status of that special legislative action is?
And how it's worded, perhaps.
Right.
Sure.
And we could put, we could put that, an agenda item on our next, our next June 2nd meeting to discuss it.
Okay, I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving along, the Town Administrator update.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a couple things this evening. First, financially, as we all know, the state of the state is still unclear, although there is some estimates at this point that the state could be looking at up to a $5 billion revenue gap. How that may trickle down to local aid is still uncertain, whether it's gonna be done as a percentage of the overall state budget. There's obviously a political element with regard to Chapter 78 and local aid. So it really isn't, it's too difficult for us at this point to make any prediction beyond, you know, although that's what we're doing, to make any firm prediction. So as a financial team, me, Finance Director, the school superintendent, and Finance Manager have been on a couple occasions now, and when we, we kind of pick the number that we hope would get us within the ballpark, if we do have to make some reductions, so that we can start looking right now at possible scenarios if we had to make some cuts. The number we chose is about a seven and a half percent reduction in state aid and local receipts. And by the way, we're starting to see local receipts trail off a little bit already, not severely, but we're starting to see it. So choosing that number of seven and a half percent leaves us with about a million-dollar problem from the currently approved spending plan by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. So that's obviously a rather large number. There are some ways that we're looking to maybe close that gap without reductions. It's a little bit early for me to tell you what the outcome of that exercise is, but that's what we're working on at the moment. Hopefully, within, you know, within a week or two, we'll have some information from the state. We had hoped to have some information today, when the governor, Lieutenant Governor, was making some, some comments to executive, to a municipal official. However, that was really in regard to the reopening state and local facilities as opposed to any potential, you know, local aid implications. So obviously, we're keeping our eye on that. That's a critical issue. If town meeting were held today, I think we all agree internally that, and I think the Finance Committee, not to put words in their mouth, but I think they would also agree that we really would have to go to town meeting with the current spending plan and more or less maintain a spending freeze, maintain some control or freeze on any, spending any of the capital monies that are set to be allocated. Hopefully, with a little bit of luxury and a little bit of time, as by the late town meeting date, we may have the opportunity to make some adjustments before town meeting that people can coalesce around. So, so that's where we are at the moment. With, I know furloughs, the furloughs have been a--
Before you move on to the furloughs, could I ask you a couple of questions, just on the financial portion?
Sure.
Do we have any updates on the $90 million grant that Plymouth County has received, how that will be distributed, and whether you think Carver will be able to get in line for any of that money?
I'm, I don't have definitive information, but I do know there was some discussions about that being distributed in two forms, one in a, in a formula based upon the size of a community, and then through a reimbursement program based upon documented actual costs. We are, like, I'm sure everybody else is doing that, is documenting costs. Right now, it's not a significant burden on the town in terms of the, you know, direct costs that can be documented. So that's what is being discussed by my peers at the moment, Mr. Chairman. I know that some of you, I know, are involved with, with the county boards and committees and management. So certainly, if you come across anything, I'm getting, my getting my information from the county as well as from my peers throughout the region.
And do we have, do you have any idea how much extraordinary expenses the town has incurred due to COVID-19?
We actually have not had much at all. Ours is on the underside of $10,000. So we've been, we've been fortunate to date. Well, and I think to some extent, it's because we've had a lot of resources and a lot of planning that's been underway for, for, you know, for a couple decades now, with the luxury of having Mr. Walsh and a civil, an emergency management department. So a lot of the planning and costs that might be associated with consultants, you know, those are not something the town has had to bear. So our direct expenses have been relatively minor.
Okay, thank you. That's all I--
Okay. I know that there's been some discussion by some members of the board who've asked regarding our furloughs. Approximately three weeks ago, maybe four weeks ago, just before I began here, the town had, through Mr. Milonowski, had some agreement with about 28 people for, to furlough either at 50% or 100%. And that, in my conversations with him before he departed, in some ways, he actually put me in a pretty good position to be able to assess each department and talk to the department heads and what their specific needs may be during this particular time. And as of this week, we have looked at bringing, we've actually brought back a number of people to some extent. I think we have about nine in some capacity, for instance, some of our financial assistance, putting our payroll and benefits, that's obviously a fairly important function that we wanted to bring back to whole. Also, the staffing in the town clerk's office, had several conversations with Kara and with the upcoming election and eventual town meeting. I think it's important that we don't, we don't want to run into any issues or concerns because of staffing. I mean, it's, you know, a stressful enough time for that office as it is, and being understaffed at this time isn't, we don't, we don't, I don't want to take a chance with that. There is some, some of the reorganization in the Finance Department, as I alluded to earlier, has, and has caused me to to bring back some of the part-time positions. So that's gonna be basically fully, fully staffed again, the Finance Department. Our library employees remain on furlough, and there's a number of those, as well as we do have a number of employees still at 50%, like, in our Planning Department. So, so we have made some decisions to bring some people back, and we continue to evaluate those on a case-by-case basis based upon input from, from department heads. I am not going out actively seeking to bring people back from furlough, but I have invited both department heads and some, it's the staff-level employees to speak to me about some of their concerns and deficiencies, so that we can make, make those decisions.
Thank you.
And the last thing that I would raise, and not for any great discussion tonight, because it's not on-- And the, the last thing that I would raise, and not for any great discussion tonight because it's not on the agenda, but I have put together, from speaking to the members of the Board of Selectmen and some of department heads, but primarily from the Board of Selectmen, a list of those issues that have been raised. And I have, I think, previously apologized for the fact that based upon my own learning curve, it may not be completely concise. There may be some redundancies, but I would ask that maybe the board members take a look at that, give me some feedback, preferably by email, because I won't forget it if it's an email form. Feel free to reformat as much as you'd like, give me some input as to priorities. So, and again, I don't need to get into any individual items tonight. I know that there are some members who have expressed particular concerns or interest. I know Mr. Belbin, my, in fact, I'm setting up a meeting with Wareham officials for us to join them to forward the goal, but also for, for Wareham and, and Mr. Belbin to help educate me as we go forward. I know there are some other issues that may be of particular interest, and that's probably not the right way to say it because I know everything's of interest to everybody. But to the extent that any member or members have a particular expertise or have done particular research on a subject, I would certainly invite, you know, to give me the benefit of that experience. And I suspect the board wouldn't have a problem if I happened to work with a member of a board on a particular item. I know sometimes it's a slippery slope in some communities where board members may have, may not be a big fan of some, some other board members participating in some of these administrative or research matters. I get a sense that's not the case with this board, so if there were an issue, for instance, that, God forbid, I had to work with Mr. Clark on something that he had expertise in, as an example, if the board has issues with that, I would like to know that, but I suspect that's not the case. And I only bring that up because, and not to throw you under the bus, Bob, but I wouldn't want there to be any concern or criticism that I'm working with Bob closely on one issue and another member of the board closely on another issue. I wouldn't want the board to think that there are members who are being frozen out of participation. And that obviously requires a degree of trust among the board members. But I do raise that because I, I'd like to milk that sooner rather than later, that's all.
I, if I may interrupt, I would just personally insist that you work with Mr. Belbin on the regional refuse to struggle district issues because he's.
That's, that's not what I was seeking from you, Sarah, but.
Please.
Fair enough, but in principle, I think it's a, beyond this, you know, this particular issue, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, I don't have any problem with that.
No, I don't think this board would, and I just, I, I think this list was, was excellent. I think, I think it's a, it's a great way to seek out, uh, thoughts on this, and I was, I was really happy to see it. I think, I think it was a, an excellent initiative on your part. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure, and one other thing if I could add specifically that, how much I've enjoyed meeting with both the board members, department heads and some of the people in the community that I haven't maybe had conversations with in a long time or at all. So it's, uh, you know, you might, I'm not being disingenuous to say it's actually been fun. So I hope to continue to do that, and if there's any people, boards, committees that the board, a board member recommends I speak to to help my learning curve, please don't be bashful.
No, and I, and I know from having speak, spoken to people around town that you've made a concerted effort to, to reach out to the community and meet with a wide variety of people, and I applaud you for that. I think it's a, it's an excellent way to, to start, so.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, minutes licensed, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chairman, 48 hours in advance. We have the minutes of April 10th, 2020. Any thoughts on those minutes? Ron, you're muted.
I made a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second? Sarah, was that a second?
Yeah.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Uh, let's see, the executive session minutes of February 11th. Any thoughts there? Have you all had a chance to review them?
Yeah, I did.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve with the understanding that we're going to, and not for release, with the understanding that we're going to get an explanation about why they can't be released.
Okay, is there a second? Well, hearing no second, I assume we'll take no action on the minutes of executive.
We have some discussion on this?
Oh, discussion, absolutely, Bob.
Well, it needs a second discussion, doesn't it?
Yeah, it needs a second.
I'll second if a discussion, okay? These meeting minutes are extremely important for the residents to know what's going on. And the reason why we're not releasing them, I think that needs to be released to the public to let them know. I know we're, we're waiting for council to come and give us a rationale for it, but, um, I think that goes to the rationale of how we came about our decision-making, and that's very important for the public to know.
And that's why I actually asked council to let us know. I mean, it's, it's certainly not adequate for me just being told it's, it's attorney-client privilege. I, I don't, I don't even know what that means in this case, you know, or why they can't be released. It, it needs a better explanation.
I would agree, and that's why I think it's a good idea for Mr. LaFawn to put together a, a meeting with us and the attorney, and we could ask these questions and get answers and, and move forward. I, I agree, yes.
It's something that we can make public, right, Bob? I mean, that's sort of your point.
Agreed.
I'll make a motion then that we table the minutes of February 11th, 25th, and March 3rd for the same reasoning.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, let's see, our next meeting will be June 2nd, 2020, Community Announcements, Mr. Belbin.
Um, just want to keep, keep everybody in their thoughts and prayers out there. There's been a, a number of people that, you see them not with masks on. Please don't get mad at them because they may have health concerns that they can't wear a mask. But I really have to say, people have been really good about it, and thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you very much, that's it.
Thank you, Bob. Ms. Owens?
Well, thank you. I just wanted to reiterate something that was posted today on social media from the town clerk, that the last day to register to vote in the town election is this Friday, May 22nd, and the last day to return early in absentee ballots to clerk's offices Friday, June 5th at 12 noon. So that's the day before the election. And it appears to me that anyone can do an early voting or absentee ballot if they feel they just, for one reason or another, can't make it to the election in person. And I, I just want to encourage people to, to vote in the town election. I think we've seen how important our local officials, the vote for our local officials is. And if you can't get out in person, please, please request an absentee ballot or an early voting ballot. And there are instructions on the town clerk's website. If you go to the, the town website, click on departments and then scroll down to town clerk. It, it's definitely in there, but you won't see it on the front page. And the last thing I was going to say, for those who didn't know about this, I just found out today myself that the Memorial Day parade has obviously been canceled, and I'm very sorry to hear that. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Uh, just to sort of follow up on what Bob said, I know people are going a little stir-crazy and the weather's getting warmer. It is going to be a natural tendency to want to escape and get out there. And just try to remember, social distancing is still important. One of the, you know, Massachusetts has been hit harder than a lot of states, and the town of Carver has had its own losses. And so it is still important, and I know it has become a little bit of a divisive issue in, in some areas, but the crisis has not passed yet and out of safe, out of safety concerns for our residents, I think it's just, we have to remember to, uh, we're all in this together and try to, try to remember to be kind to each other and to be as safe as we can. Another thing I'd like to mention is that, because, as Sarah mentioned, I, I know that most of the area towns, if not all, have canceled their Memorial Day parades and a lot of celebrations are being curtailed. And, uh, the Chair of the School Committee, Andy Cattarelle, had, has a suggestion that I think you'll see on social media, where he's suggesting that people show up at the edge of Shertlock Park on Memorial Day, socially distanced, holding flags, and maybe we do that for about an hour on Memorial Day morning. So I don't know timing specifically, but I know he suggested it, and I assume he's following up on it. So keep an eye out for that. It might be a way to celebrate and honor, you know, the folks that we, that we've lost in our waters and on behalf of representing our country.
Ron, can I ask you a question about that? Are we allowed to gather in a large number like that?
Well, again, socially distanced, right? If everyone stays 10 feet apart, I, I, we're all outside. I don't think that's an issue.
I thought we were told we could only gather in groups of 10 and social distance.
I think if you're outside, I, I, you know what, I'll send something off to Art Ford and the Board of Health.
Yeah, just, just to be safe.
I would think if you have a long line, if you have a long line of people set 10 feet apart, I think that's different than being in an enclosed room, so, but I'll, I'll send the, the email out to Art.
Okay.
Certainly, it would be nice to find a way to honor our, our, our veterans on Memorial Day. So just a couple of things I have, first of all, I just want to recognize Area 58 for all the hard work they've done on behalf of the select board and all the boards in town. They really have done yeoman's work. This has been a, a continuing learning process, and, and they've been really helpful, I think, all the boards in town in bringing government to the people when they can't get into town hall. So I just wanted to thank them for all their hard work. And on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I have a few Selectmen's certificates of recognitions for people who are having a special day, so I wanted, I'm going to try to hold these up to the Zoom camera. I don't know if it'll work, but first we have Sophie Bumpus, who is celebrating her 101st birthday on May 24th. So we have a Selectmen certificate for Sophie. And Robert Drollet, who's celebrating his 101st birthday on May 28th. So Robert, congratulations. And finally, Leonard Scollomiero, who's celebrating his 100th birthday on May 24th. So congratulations.
To all of them.
All three, and, um, I guess, stay safe, everybody, just, just do the best you can, stay safe. Thank you to all our Board of Health and all our emergency workers, and, uh, and with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a wonderful night, stay safe.
Bye, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.